Okay, at six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Keeley's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. T L chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Agenda items listed below is reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the school committee recorder, the director of edge and other members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So first thing on the agenda is minutes of February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four and March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Do you have a motion? So move to approve. Do you have a second?
Second. On, on March fourteenth, I'd like to make a correction. It had in regards to the tennis waiver. The vote was unanimous and it was not because I voted against it.
That's correct. Thank you. Anyone else? So a promotion by go vote and a second by Ann. Any other discussion? All in favor? So it's unanimous. The right to the superintendent's report.
Okay, lots of stuff going on. I think that the big one that I want to mention, at least publicly, it's been shared in email is Christie announced yesterday that after thirty-four years working in the district, this is going to be her last year. And her service will include on July fifth. I can't thank her enough for her most recent five years at Monument and her two years as principal of Monument, or two years as director of learning and teaching. And, and twenty-seven years as a teacher at Monument. I have since then also sent out an invitation to school staff and faculty, to parents, to students and the school committee to join a search committee, which I'm forming today. Something like thirty people have expressed interest in being on that search committee, which is great. It's about twice as many people as I can manage. So we'll leave that open and then I'll, I'll, I'll go through it and try to have a wide representation. Already at least one school committee person. I'll put their head in the ring. So thank you for doing that. And, and, and we'll work on it. As I mentioned in the letter I sent out, transitions in leadership are a good time to reflect and, and take stock. And, and also because of sort of where we are in the year, doing some of that work, particularly with students and faculty and staff and parents will be important because the, the next leader of the school will benefit from that tremendously. So we're going to try to figure out a range of ways to gather feedback and that may include me interviewing and, and meeting with I Ls and some other folks and then doing some faculty and staff meetings at the, at the high school to gather other information. And then maybe even some additional surveys or things, but that, that's all in the works. It's, it's not a light lift, it's a heavy lift, but the, the time we invest upfront between now and the end of the year will serve the school really well and the next principal really well. So we'll figure out the, the, the time to do that.
Is this a good time to be searching?
It, it's always a good time to be searching. It's optimistic to me. Candidly, it, it's, it's a little late, right? But I want to leave open the possibility or two possibilities. We find an extraordinary person and we do a regular appointment. Or for some reason, we're not satisfied with the candidate pool and we do some sort of interim appointment. And, and either ones are possibilities. There's enough time to find an excellent person. But, but we really have to leave it open. It'll probably be like a, a rolling application. But, but from the time I get an ad app, which might be tomorrow, but more likely Tuesday, we probably want to have it open for at least three weeks before we start interviewing. And we're a neat community, it's a neat school, there's a lot of good stuff going on and there's some work to do. But I think, I think we'll, we'll generate a fair number of candidates for a position. Interestingly, because we're in the middle of this at Muddy Brook, when I last looked, there, there are nine applicants for that position, which is, is significantly better than, than when we filled the middle school position a year ago. And it's not just the number of applicants, it's the quality of applicants, but there are a lot of people in that candidate pool that I think the, the, that search committee will be really interested in talking to. So again, big, big thanks to, to Christie and she's on the pole now, but, but we'll, we'll find some time to, to celebrate with her later, later in the spring. So we, we don't have students here tonight, I don't think, and that's, it's unusual, but okay. They may be competing athletic events, but most of them also may have gotten banned out. I don't believe we've got any grant approvals tonight. We do, you can tell me who they are so I can kick them over to the other side. We, we have our audit report, which is presented tonight. Sharon, do you see, is it John?
Yes.
Okay, so promote him. And is it just John?
Yes.
So John, when you have a chance, click on that little box and then, and then you should come over. No, not yet. Okay.
He's raised his hand.
I know, he's raised his hand. John, can you unmute yourself? Yes, I'm good.
John. Yeah, hey, that's great, we could hear you.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, yes, so thank you for having me tonight. For those of you who were not here last year, my name's John Gileswitz, I'm an assurance manager at Markham. I have twelve years of experience doing municipal audits and I've been working on Berkshire Hills since fiscal year sixteen. So to start, so you guys should have two documents. One is the financial statements and the other is the single audit report. I'm going to largely talk about the financial statements. So to start the, so the financial statements are made up of five, essentially about five parts. The first part is the audit opinion, which is the only part of the audit report that is ours. That's essentially what we, you know, it's us giving our opinion on your financial statements. The second part is management's discussion and analysis, which is a couple of pages. And it really is kind of a quick, meant to be a quick highlight of some of the, the key numbers. The next two parts are the financial statements. You have your government-wide financial statements, which are all of your operations consolidated into one column. Fund financial statements, which would, you would be more familiar with your general fund, your revolving funds and, and all of those. And then lastly, it's just the notes to the financials. So, so actually, my special numbers, I'm going to direct your attention to page thirteen. If you're looking in the lower right-hand corner, page fifteen, if you're looking at it as a PDF. Okay, so this is your statement of activities. And I'm really, I'm just going to highlight the, the third number from the bottom. That's the year-to-year change, the two hundred and sixty-two thousand. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention because largely, a lot of the numbers from last year to this year have remained fairly similar. When going over balances, there was a lot of similarities from the prior year to this year. A quarter of a million and changes is pretty small. So what makes up some of that stuff? So we're going to go back just one page to page twelve. This is your statement of net position. This is essentially the balance sheet. It had, it shows your assets, liabilities and net position. Net position is the other term for fund balance. So you'll notice on the very bottom, the last number is the total net position of a bracketed fifty-five million. Generally, people don't like to see bracketed numbers on financial statements. But this is largely due to unfunded liabilities. Almost every municipality at this point has a, probably has a negative fund balance. So if you look in the section titled non-current liabilities, you'll see net pension liability and total O P E V liability. The total O P E V liability of sixty-six million and a half is what drives that negative number, negative net position number. And that was actually fairly consistent last year, your, the total O P E V liability was sixty-five point two million, so not much of a change there. Your net pension liability, this is with Berkshire County. Last year, it was actually noted as a pension asset. The, the retirement system was so well-funded that it was, it was actually considered an asset. It was, I believe it was a hundred and seven percent funded and this year it was ninety-two percent funded. So it went back to being a net pension liability. Just. Those are the two biggest numbers on the, or for the most part, on those numbers. Does anybody have any questions on anything I've talked about so far before I move on?
I don't see any.
Okay. So then we'll just go a couple pages head to page fourteen, in the lower right-hand corner. Sixteen, if you're looking at the PDF. And so this is your governmental funds balance sheet. As you'll see going across the top, there's a column for the, the general fund, the school choice fund. Again, the school choice gets its own column because it has a large enough balance in comparison to other funds. And then everything else you'll, is kind of squished into the non-major governmental funds column. So I'm really only gonna, looking at the general fund column down near the bottom, you'll see fund balances. And there's three different ones in the general fund column. There's committed, unassigned and assigned. So it's just, I like to talk about those quickly. The committed balance is the balance in the capital stabilization fund. The balance in the assigned is largely your reserve for E and D use in the next fiscal year. That was six hundred and seventeen thousand out of that, the remaining balance is encumbrances. And then the unassigned, that's the amount that is essentially your E and D. That's what flows into the, to your E and D calculation. And this year, the five percent of the budget came out to be one point six million, so you were at one million. So it was a pretty healthy balance, you know, not too close to the five percent, but still with a, a, enough in reserve, so. So in terms of numbers though, that's really all I planned on talking about. Does anyone have any questions?
John, a thing that often comes up with the school committee and, and people or elected officials in the towns is what's typical in terms of O P E V liability for other districts? And, and how might we compare to other districts?
So I would say, I mean, the, you know, the, the liability is largely driven by the number of employees and the benefits that you, you know, per your, you know, that, that you guys provide to the employees. So I would say, I mean, I know you guys don't have, you don't have a O P E V trust that's reducing your liability at the time. And I would say, you know, I, I don't want to put an estimate, but I, more communities than not have at least started funding it to some extent. You know, some are well-funded, some are, you know, you know, not very much at all. But I would say, yeah, like I said, I don't want to put a percent on it, but I would say more have started funding it. In terms of, of the liability itself, I mean, sixty-six million is probably on the larger, definitely not the largest, but on the larger side that I, I see. I think I, I do, you know, between fifteen and twenty school districts a year. So it's, it's on the higher side, but definitely not the highest. I, I mean, I think it's reasonable, you guys are a, a good-sized district. You know, my, obviously my recommendation is, you know, if you can, you know, start, start putting money away for it, it's always a good idea. But, you know, I know the, you know, your current, current day operations are, you know, in theory more important. I know money is tight.
Okay, great. Other questions? Any questions?
So then the other report that we issued is the single audit report. This year, we audited the education stabilization fund. And, you know, I'm happy to say that we, there were, there were no findings. There was, it was a clean report, there were, were no issues. So not much to, uh, not much to, to really talk about there.
Great, thanks for finding no findings and thank you Sharon.
We did look for them, but yeah, no, there, there, there weren't any to be found.
One of the things I always, John, one of the things I always bring up is you do a lot of audits during the year. And we, for the last few years have been clean without any findings, that, that's pretty unusual, correct?
It's, it's becoming a little more common. I think we're, we're finding, we, you know, we don't necessarily always issue management letters for smaller issues. As we kind of used to in the past, and a part of it's a change in how things are handled as our transition from formerly being Melanson to now Markham. I, I mean, I will say, I mean, usually we have at least a handful of, at least smaller comments if there wasn't anything larger. But we, I will say, we didn't, so unusually, yes, we actually didn't even have any smaller recommendations for the business audit staff this year. You know, we, we go through procedures throughout the business office between like payroll cycles, receipt cycles, cash, and go through who's doing what. We, obviously, we did plenty with looking at numbers. And, and yeah, there's, yeah, we didn't, we didn't come across anything to, to report to you guys. So kudos to Sharon and her staff.
Definitely. Well done, Sharon.
Yes, very good.
Very good. Barry would be happy.
Okay, well, thank you, John, very much. We, we appreciate you joining us tonight and all the work your team did on, on this.
You're very welcome, thank you for having me.
Right. So Steve, if it's okay, what I'd like to do is transition to our next topic. Yep, okay. So the next topic, and we framed this fairly narrowly and it got a little bigger, but I think that's okay. Is we're going to talk some about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And we, our intent initially was to not talk about all of it because it's overwhelming and, and much more to talk about than, than one meeting. So we framed it initially as, as a focus on D E I B as related to staff professional development. But, but everything's a little interconnected, so what we're going to share is a little bigger than that. But we're not focusing, as we often do, on, on the student side of it. Though we have some students who are going to talk about parts of it. We're focusing more on, 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 on what we're doing with staff. So there, there's a whole gaggle of people here and at different points they'll come up and, and introduce themselves. We're going to start talking a, a little bit at the district level. We put together a set of slides and for the people at home, those slides were being edited up until the meeting. So they'll be in, in the packet later tonight when I get home or, or, or potentially tomorrow morning. But we're going to present those slides and have people talk through them. And then at, at different points, when, when it seems right, we'll, we'll pause for questions. We're going to start at the district level, we're going to talk a little bit about what's going to happen on the upcoming May half days, there are a series of workshops. And, and, and while the focus is, is D E I B, we're also going to talk a little bit about both proficiency-based work and restorative practices because we see those as, as deeply connected to the broader D E I B work. But I wanted to sort of contextualize it so, so you don't scratch your head, why are we talking about restorative practices? And the people that are here will explain that and, and share context for it. Because give me just a sec to share my screen. So this is just what I said. Okay, so Colin, are you starting?
Steve, can I start us off?
Okay, good.
Good evening. So yeah, just to kind of start the conversation off, I thought from the district point of view, we would talk just about these two kind of bigger initiatives and you're going to hear a bit more about some of them from some of the people who are going to be coming up after me. Because there's a lot of work we've done, not only this year, but in previous years in both proficiency-based learning and in restorative practices and restorative justice. And these are kind of big picture initiatives the district has engaged in that are really deeply connected, especially to equity, but through that lens to the entire field of D E I B overall. So our proficiency-based assessment system, right, it's a system designed to increase equitable outcomes for students. It does this through increased student understanding of expectations, focus on skill mastery, various learning styles to accommodate it through assessment modalities and more opportunities for feedback. And it's really an approach to education that is meant to provide equitable opportunities to all students, to make sure all students are equitably accessing their education, having opportunities to share what they're learning and really be supported in a way that meets their needs where they are and helps them get to where we as a district are looking for. So when we talk about the proficiency-based assessment or proficiency-based learning system, this also then includes everything under that umbrella, things like our portrait for graduate, which we'll be talking about in a couple of weeks, I'm pretty sure. All of these fall under that because they're all about our vision for students and where we want them to be going and how we want to support them as they progress from pre-K all the way to twelfth grade in the district, making sure that they're given that chance to master skills, they're given that chance to learn, to engage with their, their teachers, with their peers, with their interests, all of those things. And that's why this really does support that equitable access to education that we as a district are looking for. And so to jump forward a slide really quickly before I come back to restorative justice, G S P Great Schools Partnership, who has been a, a really important part of the work we've done on proficiency-based learning in this district since the beginning of it. This is a quote that they use or a statement that they use, I guess. And I just thought it kind of really highlighted exactly why proficiency-based learning is a part of this equity system and equity work that we're doing. So for us, educational equity means ensuring just outcomes for each student, raising marginalized voices and challenging the imbalance of power and privilege. And right, that gets to the heart of what we're trying to accomplish through all of our D E I B work really is making sure that our students feel like they are getting an opportunity to learn, that they're getting challenged, that their voices are being heard and they get to participate in their education in a way that is comfortable and safe, but also pushes them to, to grow, to reflect, to expand their understanding of things. So that's why I, I think it's really important, I don't think we can have a conversation about the equity work we're doing in district without at least acknowledging that this really big initiative of proficiency-based learning that we're doing is a cornerstone of that equity work and, and really always needs to be in our minds when we talk about this. So just to hop back, restorative justice is the other kind of big picture district initiative that, that I just wanted to touch upon. I know our high school students and representatives will be talking a bit more in-depth about that work as it's going. But just, it's, you know, we've got trainings that we're going to offer throughout the school year. They happen this year, they've happened in years previously, so this is once again, one of those long-term kind of initiatives that we've got going. And there's still work for us to do, but I think we're making some really incredible progress. And I, I hope you're as impressed by what we're going to hear from our students and faculty rep as, as I've been seeing their work and, and hearing them present at a recent conference was just an amazing experience. So I, I hope you're as impressed by them as I've been. And the, the kind of real basis of that restorative justice, it's about this increased community and relationship building practices. It's about creating safe, inclusive school environments and it's about adjusting our discipline practices so they're more focused on reflection and on repairing rather than punishment. And so that's why, once again, big picture initiative that we as a district have committed a lot of time, energy and resources to, that is, is a huge part of the D E I B work that we're doing as a district. So you'll hear a bit more about both of these as some other people come up and as actually I'll come back up at, at one point later again to talk to a bit more of this. But just for a big picture overview, I wanted to introduce them at the start of the process, see if there are any questions about them before we move on to, to our other kind of presenters and speakers.
What does restorative justice mean? What is, what's being restored?
In, in short, everything. Whether it's the harm that's done to a classroom environment, whether it's the harm that's done to a relationship between peers from a student to an educator, even between the adults within our buildings. Anything that is damaged by a situation within our school community, the idea is to use these practices to repair them, restore them and find that positive path forward.
So the classic example would be somebody writes something on the wall and then, and then the, the way to fix it is literally to work with the custodian to clean it off or, or paint it over.
Is that a classic example? I think that's a good example, that's not really.
No, but, but the, the teacher example, maybe the students, they, they can come up and talk about it. If, if somebody says something hurtful to a peer, how do you unpack that?
Yeah. Well, and especially in terms of the equity of it, I think one of the, the big pieces you'll hear, right? We, we always have this power of balance in the world of education. The, the teacher runs the classroom and what they say kind of goes. And that's one of the reasons why we've really committed this time and energy to restorative practices because it allows for open communication between teachers and students even. And a way that kind of balances the playing field for everybody to come to the table just assuming positive intentions and looking to make the best of the situation and find a path forward, that works for everybody. So I, I think that is a, a good example and that's kind of the simple one that we can present. But you'll hear more from our students and our faculty rep on, on how deep this work can really go when it's put into practice.
Steve, just because I'm presenting, Erica has a question. Do, do you want to take it now or do you want to do it later?
Erica, if it's a process question, we'll take it now, but otherwise, let's get through this whole thing and then we'll take the questions. We just. You're unmuted, go ahead, Erica.
Thanks, Eric Milky, who's at Tonic. I was just wondering if the gent, if the gentleman who was presenting could introduce himself.
Oh, absolutely, sorry.
I actually don't know, yeah.
Director of Learning and Teaching here at Berkshire.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Yep.
Okay, so check, go to the next slide.
And I'm going to step away for a bit, but like I said, I'll, I'll be back in just a bit.
And we're just, as, as different people speak to different parts of it, we're just going to have to come up to some of these chairs because then you're, you're more on the, on both the camera and the microphone.
And you'll introduce yourself. I thought our hall was well-known, but I shouldn't have anything. I thought our hall that was well-known, but I shouldn't have anything.
So Colin, who, who's talking through the May fifteenth workshop, Meyer, you didn't? Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Nice.
Um, my name is Meyer Weisgut and I'm the School Culture Coordinator. Um, I kept working on the May fifteenth workshops that we're offering in, um, different aspects to basically cover different topics. Uh, the purpose of these is to bring, um, um, some competency for, uh, the middle school and the high school. Uh, each of the workshops will last two and a half hours. Uh, the starting time is twelve thirty and they will end at three, uh, with a short break in between, uh, of each of the workshops. Um, you have the descriptions there, but, um, they are being run by different people. One of the workshops is for the ELLs, um, and that is, um, led by Carrie Hack. Um, we also have the integration of DEIB and restorative practices by Sarah Mead. Um, we also have the Health and Wellness under the DEIB lens with Ayanna Smith. I will be doing the conscious and unconscious bias. Um, the Bursary Cry is working on the LGBTQ and mental health and suicide workshop intervention. And, um, the building culturalist, um, sustaining pedagogy with Carlos Piado. Um, all of those workshops are happening in the middle school. I am working on the logistics. Uh, for what I know, one of the places that we are definitely using is the community room for Ayanna Smith. Since it seems like that is something that they need a figure space for. Um, here, um, for, teachers will be able to sign up to any of those workshops. Um, I will be sending the forms to the teachers after break. And they will find the workshop descriptions as you see them there. Um, and they will be able to choose by the first, second or third choice. I will try to make it the first choice to follow them if possible. I think there is a limited amount of participants, uh, per workshop, which is twenty-five to thirty, uh, depending on the space we have. Um, and, um, anticipated, um, a large amount of, um, participants in that workshop. For all of them.
Great, a- any questions about any of the individual workshops or the whole, the whole dead?
So they're not required?
They are required.
E- e- everybody's got to go to one, but, but all, nobody could possibly go to all six.
I see.
Eventually, maybe in the future, we can rotate the schedule.
Six years, would you expect everybody to go to each one of them?
Hopefully.
Yeah. You're choosing one out of six or one out of three now, right?
One out of the six.
One out of the six.
Yes.
And what happens to the other five for that person?
I'm hoping that the, um, teacher or college in the future will be able to rotate those workshops and give that opportunity for teachers to then sign up for either something similar or the exact same one, um, later in the future.
But there's also the possibility that, that somebody's already done.
Yeah.
Some deep work in, in maybe all of the areas or, or at least a couple, right? So if, if it's, you're an ESL teacher, you could run the workshop on, on that. You don't have to go to that one, but, um, um, the, a- a- and the other thing is sort of the, we'd say, thing about like the, the metaphor about where you like, every time you get in the river, the river's different. Do you know what I'm talking about? Um, where you are in your own growth as an educator could be really different when you re-enter any, any one of these.
Perfect.
Never step into the same river twice, right?
Yeah, that's. Any, any other questions about this? I, I, I think it should be good, yeah, I think it's responsive, uh, to a wide range of needs. And it'll be interesting when people articulate their choices, if it just sort of naturally spreads out, uh, evenly and, and for some reason it didn't, and we had to run two sections of something, we might be able to do that.
What about parents and administrators?
They can also sign up for any of those workshops.
Are, are parents required to do them?
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a paid schedule there, yes. Cool, thank you very much.
Um, just, I would like to take just two more minutes to say, uh, thank you all for the opportunity of letting me work for this district. Um, I hope that the, the work continues. Um, I have shared my strategic plan for the rest of the year. And, um, I just wanted to, um, let you know how grateful I was for giving these opportunities since I'm not going to be here next year. I really hope that work continues and thank you all for your support.
Thank you. So, so now I think we're going to transition to, uh, uh, the high school. So Sarah, you, in your team, come up. And just tell me what.
Go ahead, flip the slides.
Yeah.
Can we stand? He wants to say.
You can stand, you can say whatever you're coming up with.
All right, thank you guys for having us. My name is Sarah Mead Mason. Um, I've been in the school, stayed at the high school for fifteen years as a direct study supervisor. And in the last year and a half, two years, I've been changing over to restorative justice. Um, this is Jordan Alston, who's a sophomore. And we have Griffin Mapperoi as a junior. So hello, did you see this? Did you see the job? Um, so we're going to go, we have three slides that we're going to talk about. It might be a little scattered, um, but they're pretty ask questions at the end. Um, but yeah, as I mentioned, I was the direct site supervisor and now I'm adding restorative practices to, to my resume. And doing both kind of coincide because you're always out, um, in the halls. I'm working with the teachers and you're, I'm kind of always out there in the middle of all these little conflicts anyway. Um, so I'm trying to help teachers and direct them into helping with the little conflicts and then getting into the bigger ones as we. Um, staff training, we have three different tiers that we train throughout the year. We've done last year, we've done summertime. Um, we have different trainers throughout the district, including myself. I know Jose Bo, um, who has been helping us. He, we did the last training, um, for teachers a whole weeks ago. And then Elise Ward has also trained me through the three tiers, um, and has done some trainings with the teachers. The tier one training that twenty-eight percent of the high school staff members have done, this, like it has the strategies for the building of the community and the safe space in the classrooms. Um, and also managing the little like tardiness to classes or cell phone use or just like the little conflicts that happen in the classroom. Tier two, um, it goes a little bit more into, um, the facilitation of techniques for the like little tougher situations of the constant use of the cell phone or the constant use to the tardies, um, to the classes and just if there's a conflict between, um, staff and students or even between students in the classroom. So it gets a little bit more serious. Um, and I actually have twenty-five students that are trained to help with those first one and two tiers of the conflict. Tier three, um, gets into, um, just like training within the building, training with the other staffs and being able to model those programs. Um, but I am the only staff member from within the three buildings that have done all three tiers and can continue to help training. Um, the addressing conflict, so that's why I said with the tiers. Um, I just have students trained to co-facilitate with me, um, or without me. As I had a couple today, we had four students do two different, um, conflict resolutions with teachers and they did them all by themselves. I do a little bit more of the serious ones or there are students that aren't comfortable with other students helping them because this is still new and they're still trying to build that trust, um, that this, we're not here to punish you. We're here to help you and to work on things. Um, and this actually became a law in Massachusetts that we need to have restorative practices in the schools. So I think we're, we're still new and still trying to build that trust with the teachers and the students. Um, to kind of let us just help with conversations. That's really what a lot of this is about. Um, it's just not hiding behind screens or anything like that, but being able to have those conversations with someone that you may have just harmed or been in a conflict with. Um, building the team culture. I feel like that is our main thing in this district and at the high school. We're just trying to help one another, be there for one another, support one another. And that's part of changing this culture with restorative justice and the practices, because it's not just about restoring harm, but it's also about being able to use, um, the strategies like within the classroom with the curriculum and everything and just being in a circle and facing one another as you have these conversations, it just, it makes it a safer spot. Um, so that people are feeling okay to have conversations. Because when I was in high school, I was the kid in the back row that was like, you know, please don't call on me. Because you're terrified because Mr. failed was out. Um, but it just helps build that, um, connection with everybody. And I'm going to let these guys talk a little bit about the peer mentoring part.
Hey, um, like Sarah mentioned, my name is Lauren Alston. I have been doing work with diversity, inclusion, the SOB work and then restorative justice. Uh, I have been on both sides of this circle, the restorative justice circle. I've been one of the people that need to work through some conflicts. And then now I am a mentor and a facilitator. And one thing that I can say is that it creates a much more safe environment and open environment for the student to, to feel comfortable. And I think that's one thing that we were lacking prior to having restorative justice. Because you, 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 you seem to, to want to be quiet and not really express how you're truly feeling and what you think you should be able to do moving forward because of that adult in the room. And I've experienced that and noticed my peers experienced that. And working through this and then having conversations with my peers as well as teachers now, we have kind of gained a consensus that we've come to the fact that we're all human and we all have things that we need to work through. So how are we going to get to point A to point B for all of us to feel comfortable? And that is kind of what, that is what restorative justice allows to happen. And with peer mentorship, as I said before, more comfortable and you can feel more confident, I'd say. And I've noticed that students open up a lot more when you have a peer in the room, a trusted peer rather than an adult. So, yeah, I've worked at the middle school doing that as well as the high school. Um, facilitating for older than me, people younger than me. And we can, we're able to agree that we're all moving towards one common goal, having a good and solid and comfortable school environment.
Yeah, kind of speaking on that, my name is Griffin Mapperoi. I'm a junior here at Marmine. I've been working with the sort of justice as a student since freshman year. Um, I kind of was brought on by two seniors, um, uh, I mean, Julian Vadel and Abby Boyd. And it's kind of seen it grow from just having circles between, um, teacher-student conflicts to now it's kind of risen to something where I've kind of looked into, which is peer addiction. Um, it's kind of becoming a pretty big thing throughout, um, teenage years where pe- peers are getting addicted to different types of things, whether it's drugs, alcohol. Babing is a big thing and I kind of put my foot to the door and tried to open that up through restorative justice where now we try to have at least two times a month or so, um, peer addiction lunches where it's just students in the room. Any student who feels, um, like they need someone to speak to, maybe they don't feel comfortable going to an adult, but they feel comfortable going to someone who's on the same plane as them, who's there to listen and kind of can relate to them as a, as, as a peer, as a team. And having these lunches, I've seen, we've seen great numbers come and kind of now I've started to build up communications with these peers who, who don't maybe have an adult they can go to, they can come to me and they can talk whenever they need. And, and there's, there's about five of us who kind of, in the RJ students who kind of need these peer addiction circles and it's just an open space for people to talk and, and kind of find help. And we can help them get to the place they want to be.
But I think as the tier one's here, two's in tier three, so we've already talked about those. Do you remember the next one and the last one? Yeah, so our goals for the future, because I've been doing this for about a year and a half. Um, and like I said, I have twenty-five student members. And so the way things go, at least at the high school, probably every school, is we're kind of up and down. Where we had five cases this week that we needed to do, but you know, after vacation we might not have any. So I'm trying to grow this as to, these guys touched on, uh, how else we can help our community and how else we can help our students, um, with the building in the classrooms. So like teachers can get into a circle and have conversations. An example is like, if you're going to have a test on the next day, you can go through the questions. And what we've experienced is that the students learn a little bit more through repetition and hearing from other students. So each person's going to have a turn to talk. Um, and so it's not just the teacher that's kind of just explaining everything. Everyone needs to kind of bring their own little input. Um, and again, I'm trying to make classrooms a safe space. Um, so another way that we have used this too is, um, if something big happens in the community and the whole school needs to talk about it, we can run into our advisories. We can have these circle conversations that hopefully the teachers have built a safe spot with the students to feel comfortable talking. You always have the option to not speak at all and just listen. We just ask that everyone is being respectful to everyone's feelings, um, and just, just kind of listen. But like you guys were saying, as the conversation gets going, you see more participation and the students start to feel a little bit more comfortable as they kind of see the process going. Um, one thing that we're trying to do is also build the bridge to the middle school. Um, we have students go down there to talk about vaping in general. Um, we're trying to get into their classrooms to show the circle conversations. And we're also trying to, after break, kind of connect and see if some of our students can help us on the conflicts that are happening down there.
I think something that also we try and focus, like building the bridge between the middle school and elementary schools, we're also trying to kind of diversify. I feel like this club and group in the school kind of is diversified across the school. I think like Jordan said, like when we have these circles and these students do have conflicts, we kind of encourage them to even join to help out students in the future. Because we want to have a group that is like as diverse as possible, that covers as many backgrounds of the school as possible. So if we do have these conversations, the students who are leading them, they can connect with students from all backgrounds of the school. So no stu-, no student doesn't feel like represented or doesn't feel comfortable. Trying to create the most comfortable space possible. And when you have students from all different types of backgrounds and situations, it really opens up the place to be able to speak on what you really want to be heard.
Yeah, completely, completely agree with her. And I'm just going to touch on something with the middle school. I went down there before to talk with a student that has been battling struggling with vaping. And I believe she was in seventh grade, which is crazy to think about, but it unfortunately is the real, it's the reality. And she completely opened up to me, telling me about everything from why she started doing it, how she started doing, where she's getting it from, why she wants to stop. And like everything that you could like want to ask, she told me, which I thought was beautiful. And I, I had relayed this information to the, uh, staff member who was working with her. And that allowed there to be a plan and something set for her and other peers to work on this. And I think without that honesty and transparency, then there wouldn't be a proper, uh, way to navigate that situation if there's not transparency. And with this peer, this peer mentorship, that is able to happen.
Okay, I've been hearing, um, two more things that we're just trying to build on. Um, for their ELL students, we do have some students that can speak Spanish. And so we try to get into those classrooms, um, to have that circle conversation, but to also teach them how to speak English. And our students are able to translate if they need to. Um, but also just make them feel part of the community, ask them, you know, what they might need more of and more support from. Um, so that we've been doing like every other week, um, during all the block. And then the last thing, um, we just went to this Rhode Island conference to, um, talk with another school and kind of present what we're doing. And now we're getting, um, communication from schools in Vermont, Maine and New Hampshire to kind of ask, you know, what else we can help them with. And for some reason they think that we're the experts of this. Um, so it's, but it's great to like build those partnerships and just kind of work with each other and kind of see what one school's doing, um, and how we can all kind of help each other in doing this. Because it is kind of a brain process. Um, and how we can all kind of help each other in doing this, because it is kind of a brain process. Even though way back when, thousands of years ago, like the tribes and everything, they, they did restorative practices, right? They needed each other to help each other accomplish things and new things. So if there's a conflict in a tribe, they're, they're gonna need to work it out so they can count on another. So that's kind of where this grows from.
Great. Do you have questions?
Um, for the students, Jordan and Griffin, what's the most difficult part of your job as a, as a peer, um, counselor? What's the most difficult part? And could you give a specific example of how you work that through?
I mean, I think some of the times where I face the most difficulty is like, for example, today, I was in a, I was leading a conflict. It's one of my first times I've been able to lead a conflict and kind of lead myself the conversation, but it was between a faculty and a student. I think, you know, you're trying to level the back, or level the playing field as much as possible to create that, that safe conversation, a place you can grow. But at the end of the day, sometimes it is kind of hard for that teacher to take a step back to kind of, to kind of understand that if you're, if you're opting into the circle, which everything is opting in, you don't, you don't have to participate in restorative justice. It's just an option that you really hope you take on because obviously it's very beneficial. But sometimes it's hard for the, the teacher to totally, totally take that step back. But I think like what you really have to do in the moment is just say, is just talk to the teacher, like I just stepped out of the teacher. Like I had a conversation outside of the circle to say like, I understand, I don't understand, this may not be a normal practice that you've done. But if you can really just step down and level the playing field, this conversation can be very beneficial. You can move forward in the way that you really want to.
Yeah, I think one thing for me that I think I've worked on tremendously is working on biases, I guess. In the sense of when I think something's right, someone is right, it doesn't really matter at all. You're just, the goal is to, so once again, level the playing field, make sure that everyone is comfortable. And, um, one thing that I did just to check that was to check myself, just to keep checking in. And I think you can do that with any type, any sort of bias, is just checking in with yourself. And that would, that allowed me to, to take that facilitation role, to take that role to guide rather than have my input. And yeah, I think that was the biggest thing for me to overcome, but I do think I have done a fine job overcoming it.
Somebody else might say this, but what you're doing is really impressive. And all the others people sit and keep doing it, but you're a priority.
The school is lucky to have you.
The, the culture's growing. We trained like twelve students about two weeks ago and just keep growing. It's just been gracious, diversified across our school.
Yeah, when students in Massachusetts come and present like this, we realize what a good school it is, what, how lucky we are to have people like you there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Yes, who wants to follow up? Uh, so let me invite up the, the next group. We're, we're gonna talk some about, uh, what's happening at the, at the, um, middle school now. And I think we're bringing Colin back. Uh, we were gonna have, um, Ellie come and present some of this, but there's a stomach bug going around all the schools. So, uh, so she's unable to. So Colin will pitch it for her.
Yeah, I guess I have to follow that. And, and just before I dive into the middle school, Sarah was being rather modest. I think I was at the conference that, that just took place, the School of Design in Action Conference. Um, so to hear that other schools are reaching out to our students, that are understood. Sitting in that room, our students stood up, they presented very similar to what you just heard in terms of the theory and practice of it. But then to give everybody who was in the room, these are educators from across New England, maybe even other states outside of New England, a, a taste of what we're doing. The students then led circle conversations amongst these groups of strangers, just sat down with about twelve to fifteen, uh, adults each and led conversations deep into their own experiences with discipline in school settings, their own vulnerabilities. They just, these deep conversations that were amazing to watch and hear and be a part of. So it is not a surprise to me that others are reaching out because our, our students were absolutely impressive and, uh, you know, they, they kind of asked us not to film things and what, so they, but if I could bring you a video to show you what our students were doing, uh, I think your jobs would be on the floor because mine was sitting in the room that day. They were just absolutely amazing to the world. Uh, so just, so really great work and, and the entire group doing it at the high school, just absolutely amazing students that we have. Um, so to, to start off with the, the middle school's work, it's actually related to that restorative justice. They've created this circle keeper position. Um, it's a paid stipended position that is supporting the circle conversations that are taking place in the middle school as they kind of work through and, and figure out how to expand the student participation in that organization. Um, you just heard from our high school students that this is something they're working on is almost through a mentoring kind of system in, in bringing this to our middle school students. Uh, but for the time being, especially with some of those trickier conversations, these being a younger group of our students in district. Uh, having an, an adult in the room who can kind of help give some structure to those conversations, help them all find that resolution has been really beneficial to bring those restorative practices into our middle school and, and then from there hopefully to continue to grow them down. So we've got this full vertical consistency pre-K all the way to twelve, will be the long-term goal there. Um, so in addition to the circle keeper, they've got most of their professionals trained in the restorative justice work as well. Um, and we continue to try and, uh, elevate that. I, I know many people in the middle school have gone through the tier one training. Some have engaged in tier two and, and we're looking into next year bringing in a tier three trainer in that building. The way Sarah is a tier three trained facilitator at the high school, uh, to just make sure that we've got that full level of support for the restorative practices. Um, proficiency is another thing that the middle school has been working really hard on this year. That's actually why Miles isn't able to be here today. He's with a contingent of staff from the district up at some Vermont schools this week, um, who have been doing proficiency for a lot longer than we've been working in it to just try and ask some questions, get some ideas and problem solve some of the challenges we face. Um, so once again, that work is all about equitable outcomes for our students. And that's what he's engaging in right now. It's something the middle school has really been driving forward this year and continuing to grow hopefully into next year and in the years past in the serious level that they're doing right now. Um, we may have people listening in or people sitting at the table who have middle school students and might have even noticed our report cards at the middle school have two different tracks right now. Cause they're even playing around with that process of reporting out in the proficiency system. They're almost piloting it for our district this year to, to really highlight how we can share our proficiency levels and, and our student reflections with our families and our community.
Colin, and the first bullet point under proficiency-based learning.
Um, yeah, the letter grades, or, or letter grades being phased out, what, what's?
Yeah, so a proficiency-based learning system no longer relies on that traditional, you know, uh, ninety to a ninety, or ninety to a one hundred, I guess would be the A. The eighty to an eighty-nine is the B. We, we don't deal in those letters and numbers anymore, which in themselves can be pretty abstract and inconsistent classroom to classroom. So the entire idea here is instead, we've got our teachers and they've done a lot of work on our PD days throughout the year so far, um, designing what's called performance indicators. And they're skill-based statements that highlight exactly what we're hoping all of our students will be able to accomplish, grow, and achieve in each subject area at each grade level. So we start by determining what are called competencies. And, and this is something I'm, I'm happy to bring back to the table at a later point with some more visuals information for you, um, to just kind of highlight the system and, and show you where we're at with it. Uh, but the competencies are these big kind of umbrella categories of skills that fall under a subject area. And they're consistent pre-K to twelve. You know, so reading is one of the competencies in our ELA classes because we want students pre-K to twelve engaging with reading in different ways. The performance indicators are then the more specific grade band skills that we're hoping students will have at each of those grade levels. So a performance indicator at the middle school at our five through eight is not going to be the same indicator we might see students in the high school being assessed by our students in the elementary school. Um, and even yesterday, Dan, um, Leibert, Leibert, thank you, I forgot on his last name. Um, Dan Leibert and I were at the middle school for the PD day, working with them on learning targets, which are kind of the third level. And that i- in historic terminology is objectives that lessons should have day to day. So our learning targets help us move students towards their performance indicators. The performance indicators are all part of these competencies. And basically the idea is instead of giving a student, you know, a ninety-five on an assessment anymore, we can help them through reflective terminology determine where they're at with the different skills we want them to achieve as students in this, in this district, uh, in each of their subject areas at each grade level. And that's where our words like beginning, developing, meeting, and exceeding are gonna start coming in and being more present on our report cards. As we talk about where students are in this, it allows us to, like I said earlier, meet students where they're at with these different skills and make sure that all of our educational opportunities are designed to help them get from where they are now to where we want them to be. Where that traditional letter grade system is, is often seen more or less, whether this is accurate or not, as kind of a one and done. We've given you the test, you've taken it. Now we're moving on to the next assignment, next assessment, next learning. Where really we want to string all of these activities, these assignments together to highlight the skills that students are gaining. And proficiency-based learning, proficiency-based assessment and reporting shares out where the students are at with each of these skills, not just this number we've associated to their performance on a given assessment. Um, so that, that statement, it looks like, uh, cut off of it, but it should say, you know, some teachers are doing letter grades and some are doing this proficiency-based reporting.
And we'll come back with, we'll do like a deep dive in two areas and, and I don't wanna paint us into a corner, but like sixth grade math and eighth grade ELA or something. And, and we'll go really granular in it, uh, and maybe get some anonymous pieces of student work and, and really look at it that way.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to bring that back to the table to just show you where our proficiency system. Um, because like I said, it is, it is a big push we've been doing as a district for years. It, you know, predates my time here and hopefully will last long after all of us are dealt in the district because it, it really is the way that education is kind of moving right now in terms of giving students the language to engage reflectively with their own education and to grow from where they are to where they can be. Um, so it's, it's great for that.
But doesn't the D create that same motivation? If you're, if you're struggling in class, you get a D. So, um, isn't that a message that you, you're not proficient? You need to improve?
Yeah, the idea would be the difference in what's considered a fixed mindset compared to a growth mindset. And the D is, is related historically to that fixed mindset. Right now, I'm a D student. And it creates this almost label that students have to carry with them, a weight of, of, you know, especially with an F, a literal weight of failure. Whereas in the proficiency system, a student who historically might have earned a D is labeled as developed because the skill isn't fully where we want it to be yet, but it's moving in that direction. And so it creates more of what's called a growth mindset. It helps our students understand that reflective piece of education. Frequently, if you give a student an F, if you give a student a D, it's very hard for them, because of the way averages work, to get their grade two and A, even if they could get that A level at some point in the future in terms of a grade on assessment. So the proficiency system allows them to really recognize where they are in a moment and what the path to get there has been. And that's why it's this more equitable system. It's less about labeling our students, right? It's along the same lines as our D leveling that we were doing at the high school. It's, it's less about putting students on a certain track and creating a mindset of this is where you belong in education. And instead saying, this is where you are right now, now let's help you get to where you can be in the future. It's that growth mindset that we're trying to develop in our students. And the terminology of a proficiency system supports that mindset a lot more than those traditional letter grades usually predict.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, um, the challenge of, uh, from, from talking to students and having a granddaughter who, who brings us up all the time is that they're, they're wedded to the old system. Okay? So I'm gonna ask you a question in regards to this, and I'm for proficiency based. I, I'm for what you're saying. But the problem I see is what if in the seventh and eighth grade, you haven't achieved certain aspects? There is no holding back. You don't prevent the eighth grader from going to the high school. So now that eighth grader, let's take, um, in math, okay? There's not, there's certain skills that in the math class they have not achieved in proficiency-based standards in eighth grade. So now they go to the ninth grade and now that teacher there has to do not just what is in the ninth grade, but how does, and maybe we're getting granular here, and this will be addressed later, but how does that teacher, uh, for example, in ninth grade algebra, able to catch up that, the, the student who in eighth grade has not achieved all of the standards? And so it seems to me there's more pressure put on both the student and the teacher to catch up. And what if they don't catch up? Do we then, do we then, what in the old system is says, oh, we just pass them on? Okay, kid can't read from fourth grade. Okay, he's at the fifth grade level. Well, you know, now he's a freshman. Well, we'll just pass him on. Okay, how do you avoid that?
So this, it is a deep kind of philosophical question in the realm of education, especially as these transitions are happening and in our system, right? But as you just heard, even with the restorative practices, proficiency is along that same idea that it's, it's not a universal system yet. So there's not one easy answer to that question is, is the unfortunate reality of it. And it is a challenge that any district engaging with proficiency faces. And this is one of those things that, that we have up in Vermont who are seeing these schools in action that have been doing it for longer than we have. It's one of the things they're looking into. So just short kind of answer on that. And, and like I said, when I come back and we talk more deeply about the proficiency system, I think this is something we can definitely dig deeper into. Um, even under the traditional system, that situation exists. It's, it's the simple reality of education. There are many situations in which holding a student back for academic reasons has bigger detrimental impact on them than allowing them to move forward for social reasons. And therefore, even if we're not in a proficiency system, we have students who move forward in grade levels who may not have the skills and knowledge that we expect them to have at that point. We also have students who come to us from other districts, from other countries even, that are wildly different skill sets and have different sets of knowledge. So whether we're in a proficiency system or not, this is a problem that education just faces. How do we get students all to where we want them to be by that twelfth grade point, by that graduation point? If they come to us with different skills and different knowledge? And this goes back to then, right? If we philosophically just approach it from that growth mindset, it's work that we have to do, but the goal would be having educators running these D leveled classrooms, having educators run classrooms with varied assessment modalities. So we can do our best to understand what the student is currently capable of and provide them assessments, provide them assignments, provide them supports that will help them get to where we want them to be. It also does include as we move forward in the system, refining and reviewing our tier two and tier three intervention models so that we can make sure that every student is getting the supports they need to find success. And that's why this is a system really all about equity. Because historically, you might have a student that is an F student and for whatever reason gets moved forward. And now their next teacher understands them as an F student. There's a label that comes with that. There's a perception that comes with that. Whereas the proficiency system says, this student that is moving into your classroom this year is developing in their skills. Right? It, it refrains that approach. Okay, they're developing. That means they can improve, they can grow. It removes that stigma of they're a failing student and instead refrains.
What about a kid who's not growing? What about a kid who's not growing? What about a kid who regressed at eighth grade?
I, I, I think the thing that we've not been talking about that, that's gonna become really evident and important is how we use time and mess around with time, right? So, so the notion that everybody can learn math in forty-five minute periods and that works for everybody is just bizarre. But, but we still exist in a, in like a factory model around schooling. Some of us need an hour and a half to learn math, right? Some of us need two and a half hours to learn math. And, but, but, but we might do reading super quickly and it's, and it's not an issue. So, so I think there'll be, as, as we dig into this deeper, there'll be all sorts of implications around flexibility and how do we change how we use time, uh, to, to best support students.
And I'll just, I wanna add a comment. Jason mentioned it at the budget hearing. Um, this all sounds very good, but being a teacher and having talked to teachers who have, I just mentioned to Sarah, a, a teacher's using All Quiet in the Western Front. There's four kids in the class that can't read in, in English. There's another four or five that have IEPs and PARs with them. And then there's another group of kids who, uh, have read All Quiet in the Western Front in, in basically two or three days. Okay, now that's all in one classroom. So I think the problem here is how do you deal with this system with class sizes of maybe eighteen to twenty? Um, and Jason brought it up and I've been thinking about it since the public hearing, is I think we really have to seriously look at class size. Uh, the person, the teacher who I mentioned who's using All Quiet in the Western Front had eighteen to twenty kids in the class. That teacher was so frustrated, they, they wanna leave. They said, I can't do it. And, and I talked with that teacher for years and we trained him in the old socialized department. He's an old guy who, he likes to use novels. I think that's challenge, and, and I know we're getting granular and so I won't go any deeper, but I think that's really an important challenge that has to be faced. You're dealing with teacher frustration as well as student frustration. Student frustrations from the, the side of the kid that can't read and, and, and wants to. and, and, and wants to, to the kid who's read that book in two days and is sitting there wondering, why are we going over this? What can I do?
So now, I, I, I don't wanna get into a whole debate, and we'll definitely chat about it later.
This is a good meeting confer topic.
But did, did what we used to do do any better?
Right.
It was easier, but, but was it any better? And, and, and it might've been better for the top twenty percent of the class, but, but was it better for all eighteen people in the class, right?
To be clear, we're, he's presenting on the middle school right now.
Yes, okay, okay. Just to tell the committee, I think that this is a meet and confer topic. And I think it was coming up on this.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's coming up at our next meeting.
Okay, good.
Other questions before we move on?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
How would your middle school students say they understand their progression? Are they confused? Are they not? Are they, if the teacher is giving them a, you know, you're developing kind of thing, is there an understanding like if, if, as a, as a middle school student, I would not have understood. I would've said, I don't know what that means.
So this is, this is one of the biggest aspects of a proficiency-based system that we are definitely working to improve on and grow on. Um, and it's a little tricky right now where, like I said, the middle school is piloting this system of reporting these kinds of grades and, and these kinds of assessments at this time. And once we're more kind of fully in it, it's going to be an easier process for us to adjust the cultural mindset of our, of our community around this. Because right now, some of their teachers are giving them letter grades, some of them are giving them this proficiency kind of report. So it's, it's making it a little bit trickier for them to fully understand because it's not as consistent as it can be. But once this is all that they know, the, the great thing about a proficiency-based learning system is even yesterday when we were talking to the teachers about learning targets, we were talking about how to make this what we call student-facing language. Language that students can understand and engage with. Because everything about a proficiency system should be understandable to our educators, our families, our students. And they should be able to use that language reflectively. So the language that is in our indicators, the language that's in our portrait for graduate, the language that are, are in our learning targets should also be the language that students are utilizing when we're doing things like our student-led conferences. So as we continue to flush out this system, as we continue to implement it in a wider range, this is going to be what our students know and how they speak within their classroom experience. They'll be able to say, I'm accomplishing today's goal because, and reference the learning target for that lesson. When they have these student-led conferences, they'll be able to talk about why they are a developing student in one area and proficient in another because they'll be given the language to do so by their teachers.
Yeah, like literally, there's a rubric with four columns in each of the areas and they can self-identify. In this area, I'm in the developing and in this area, I'm in the, the, uh, meeting or exceeding. Um, and, and, and that's very different than, than, you know, wha- wha- what does a ninety-five mean? Right?
So you think they understand it now?
I think we, we, I could probably bring you a group of ten middle schoolers and three of them would probably understand it, three of them would say they understand it and express a bit of confusion when explaining it. Three of them would probably say they have no clue, one of them would say, what's proficiency like?
Those kids, so, so seventy percent of the kids are not sure where they are. So how do they improve upon their performance?
Uh, we continue the system and that's why the consistency is going to be key, right? In all of adolescent psychology and adolescent development, they talk about consistency being key. And I think one of the reasons why there would be some confusion at this point is because we have students who would walk into their English class and get a proficiency-based report and walk into their math class and get an A on, on the test. So it's.
Karen, man, if I make a point more. So we have a, a agenda item here, this diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging professional development update. And this has nothing to do with any of that, we're well off that. And normally, I don't, I love our pre-pling manner, this is an incredibly important topic that I get a lot of questions about. So for the public not to know that we're gonna have this like very important deep dive policy discussion and then to just have it here, I'm gonna give you guys an update of professional development.
Well, we'll, we'll disagree on this. First of all, I think this, the public, if we had advertised this, maybe one more person would have shown up.
I disagree.
Second of all.
I disagree. The policies that Peter and, 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 um, sorry, Colin, I talked to her right now. When this goes to a vote, that screen's below a thousand people because people talking.
Second, all this science is being taped. And I'm not doing this just for the public, we, we have to learn. And we are learning.
And we should put it on the agenda and have it the right way, that's what I'm saying. This is fair. This is, I, I, we get so far off track and we create so much distrust of the public on process issues when we rush things and, and, and don't go through the proper way. And I've been telling people, no, that we're gonna have conversations about this.
We are, we're not talking.
But how, how, I, I wish I would've told all these people who, who complain about this, frankly.
Well, we won't have more conversations.
Next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yeah, that's good. That's, I'm just, it's just important, not, not a, you know?
No, I understand. I respect it, what you're saying, but, but I think.
I would've, I would've prepared for this conversation if I knew what the story to be talking about tonight, I'd say that.
Continue.
And I'm sorry, but I have to say that I'm coming from the same place that he is because I'm, I'm always at a loss at where things belong, but when I have a chance to address things that people have addressed to me and I, as a parent, would have wanted to know and I see an opening to do it, then I can't not. So.
No, I, I know, yeah, yeah.
In the wrong place.
Yeah.
But it seemed like the place for it. And so I, if there's another place for it, I will, I will stop. But as long as there's a, a good place for it, because personally, I feel like this is everything. This is the school. And having spent time at the school, this is why we have a school committee.
Yeah.
One of the hugest reasons, to make sure we're doing right by the students. And every time that I hear from a parent, from a student, from a teacher, I'm leaving, I'm taking my kid out of the school, why is this done this way? And I don't have an answer. And it comes up at a meeting like this, I feel like this is the only place that I can get the answer from. So I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, and, and I'm definitely engaged in this conversation today.
I'm sure this is not what you expected, but if there's another time to discuss this, I would be so.
No, and, and next week.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna continue this.
There's lots of things to do.
I'll, I'll ask you two weeks.
Don't rush this.
Yeah, whatever. We should do it right.
Yes, Diane, no one said you shouldn't. We are doing it right.
Yeah, I, I know, and I'm not telling you that you're right. I just, um, I don't wanna go down the wrong path that we're not expecting tonight.
No, no problem. I'm happy to engage in any conversation about it. That's why I, you know, I, I don't know the points of order or, or the, the kind of adherence to agenda or not. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer because this is how I got into this role in the first place, is these kinds of topics excite me, this is what I enjoy talking about and what I'm happy to. Like, I probably could sit here and talk about this longer than you all would just sit here tonight. Um, so that's why I put it on, two weeks from now, put it on the meeting after that, meeting after that. We can keep going in this conversation until there is full understanding of it. Because it is a, an initiative, like I said, that was started before I was here, but is a big initiative and has a lot of impact. So I understand why there are so many questions. I understand that we want to understand. And any questions we have should get answered. So as many times as we need to discuss this, let's discuss this. So we can make sure whether you're at this table, whether you're watching at home on Zoom or you, you watch the recording three days from now, everybody has the answers that they need and are looking for to understand why we're doing what we're doing as a district.
And I would agree that if this was the only time we're gonna discuss this and no one, you obviously don't know that, then thi- this would be a huge error. But this is just the beginning of a very long conversation.
And, and it may not be just May second, right?
It won't be, yeah.
It, it, it may be the next five meetings we're talking about this. Um, so maybe what we do, Colin and Steve, I'm seeing Erica hand up too. Um, we finish this slide, we get to Cynthia in the, in, in the elementary school and, and respond to additional questions as they come up.
Yeah, Erica, go ahead.
Hi guys, it's Erica again. Um, I just wanted to point out that I recently had personally reached out to Peter asking that diversity, equity and inclusion issues be a regular recurring agenda item so that, because I know it's near and dear to a lot of people's heart and even attending every possible meeting I can attend and making new ones, so I can, so my voice can be heard. Um, I often don't know what's going on and I know lots of people wanna know. So similar, Steve, to how the town has a recurring, who's a tonic waterworks item, so that even if no action has been taken and there's nothing new, we know it's still on people's minds. I would love to have this as a recurring thing, as a reminder that this is really important and steps are happening and, and let the rest of us know about it.
Thanks, Erica. We'll look at that. Well, I haven't thought about it, but it's a good idea.
Um, so just to, to kind of wrap up the middle schools PE related to DEIB, uh, two other things that, that should be mentioned, Berkshire Pride, um, providing them with cultural-sensitive approaches to our students connected to LGBTQ plus community. Um, this was the first of a three-ser, uh, three-part series that Berkshire Pride is going to be doing with the school district. Uh, the first session has also already happened at the high school. Um, one of the offerings on May fifteenth is the second in that series. So that goes back to the question earlier in terms of if you choose one of those six, will you get opportunities to do the others? And the answer is yes. Because this is something that is really important and we've talked about creating the common understanding, common language and common terminology that comes out of a series of trainings like that is really important for us to have fully across our school community. So educators who choose to do it on, on May fifteenth will have other options for them in the future and as that second, uh, part of the three-part series comes into the schools again, whether it's later this year or next year to be provided. And then part three will be provided after that as well to make sure that we can round that out. Um, so this isn't something that only happened at the middle school, but at the high school already as well. Um, and then Carrie had provided them with their foundational ESL approaches for all levels. Um, and so most, if not all of the middle school has gone through that, it's one of our offerings on May fifteenth as well. So that high school teachers can start to engage with that same workshop series uh, that we've already opened up at the middle school as well. Once again, to create that common language, common understanding and common approach system across our grade levels. I'm a little afraid to ask if there are more questions. But I'll do it just for consistency sake.
There will be. You should run.
Thank you, I forgot to get to that.
So, so now, um, um, I, I'm gonna have Cynthia come up. Uh, and Cynthia, you can, oh, Cynthia and Katie together and.
She's gonna talk. The moral of the story. You can answer the question, okay? I'm Cynthia Carey, the Assistant Principal at Muddy Brook. Katie Runcle, the Principal of Muddy Brook. Um, so DEIB at Muddy Brook, um, at Muddy Brook, we are really developing the building blocks for both relationship building and using common language to communicate our emotions and feelings. So, um, as you can imagine, the, our school is where all of this starts. And so it's super important that we do this work. A lot of it is natural and comes natural within the structures that we have at our school. Um, so our SEL leads um, have been focusing on a community circle, which is a restorative, um, practice. And this is a natural addition to an existing morning meeting that almost every elementary school teacher starts their day with. Um, in addition, we have a tier one second step social emotional curriculum that we, um, put resources into this year, made sure that we updated the curriculum. All classroom teachers have access to, to this tier one second step curriculum. Um, they have videos that they can play for students around conflict, um, feelings, emotions, all this stuff. So, um, that's something that we have done to, um, support our teachers, supporting our students. Um, we also had ruler and, um, the mood meter was something that our teachers were all trained in and, um, use in their classrooms. And then we also have had student assemblies where we reinforce concepts of, um, of diversity, equity and inclusion. I just want to point out that why this is included in a P, adult PD is because the SEL leads would get trained in their SEL time either by Iona or Elise. And then they would, um, have vertical team meetings where they trained teachers at their grade levels to carry out these things. Um, so this is just a, you know, this is a picture of one of our clinicians teaching, um, a SEL lesson. Um, uh, and the quote is an ally is just a really fancy name for being a really good friend when someone is being bullied. So as I said in the beginning, right, these are the building blocks for making sure that everybody feels seen and heard and a part of our community. And as we develop these common languages and these building blocks, as students move up through the grades, right, this will just be the common lexicon when you get to fifth grade, when you get to eighth grade. And those, um, teachers and those students and our staff can build on them. Our, um, our students and teachers have been learning about and acknowledging diversity. A lot of this work is embedded in the instruction that our teachers do. Um, so the trainings that we specifically had this year, we had an LGBTQIA plus training in August that was provided, um, through DESI called the Safe Schools Program. After that, we had eight staff identified as allies who could be resources for our students that may feel, or families that may feel like they need support. We had the Latino Festival at MBE, there were two other schools that also did that. Um, an assembly for the Day of the Dead we had with community members with a mariachi band and activities related to the holiday. Were supported by middle school students and community members. It was a very fun day. Um, and then we had our theme for Read Across America was raising diverse leaders. And it was also Black History Month. So we had our, um, every teacher created a bulletin board outside their room with the help of their students and they put up student work. It was super powerful, uh, um, around diverse books that they had read and then the, the students reflected upon it. And then, um, one of the days of, of, um, in Read Across America, we, we had a bulletin board parade. So all the students walked around and saw everybody else's work. And then they went back to their classrooms and wrote appreciations to those, um, those students and their work. It was super fun and powerful with a couple of cool pictures. Let's see, he wandered up in the right corner. So cool. It was really fun. And the, the bulletin boards, obviously, the staff helped. Uh, but it was a lot of student work. This was, uh, the bottom is a very powerful book that they read in fourth grade. And the, um, both families would not allow these girls to play together even though they were, they weren't supposed to touch each other or go on the other side of the fence. But then they discovered that nobody said they couldn't sit on it. Um, so equity and inclusion at Muddy Brook is a lot of, um, is both at work and in the play that we do there. You can imagine that, you know, a lot of our, of our students are the tiniest little pre-K students and are even a fourth grade student is comparatively still pretty tiny. They, a lot of where they learn is in play. And so, um, we have focused a lot on making sure that our students see themselves reflected in the books that they read, whether it's a decodable reader book, a chapter book or a math workbook. Um, they need to be able to see their families represented there. They need to be able to see themselves represented there. And, um, and we're doing that good work through adop- the adoption of new curriculum. And that, that really does need to happen. Really need to have math books that show. I was doing a deep dive with my ILS just earlier this week and I was looking at a fourth grade, um, word sheet that, uh, worksheet that the students were working on. And it was a word problem and there was a, um, one of the students had a hijab on. And it was a word problem and there was a, um, one of the students had a hijab on. You know, and it just, it just really like, you know, brought me joy to make sure that the curriculums that we're presenting in front of these kids represent the world. And, um, and it's really important to update our curriculum in that way. So we are doing that with IM, our, um, illustrative math program. And then we also are working with, um, the creation of a literacy plan with Mass Literacy Institute. So we're working on updating our reading program at the school. So hopefully we will get a curriculum where all students and all family types are represented in the books that these kids are seeing every day. It's very important. Um, and then also at play, we have had playworks, which, um, I've come to talk to you about before. Playworks is in our school. We have a junior coach program that empowers our fourth graders to go outside and run inclusive games with younger students. And I, you know, it's super important. Kids really love it. It gives kids who may not have peers at recess or, um, really know how to engage, uh, with, you know, kids their age. It's super helpful to have, say, a fourth grader there running, um, a tag game. And it has been, teachers have given us feedback that it's been very helpful. And, um, to see that leveling the playing field is important for our students has been wonderful. This is a picture of the kiddos that you see in the purple shirts are, are, um, junior coaches. They wear a purple T-shirt out every recess, so the other kiddos can recognize them as somebody they can go to. It's been great. Super fun. Everybody's loved it. Moving forward, um, we will continue training our staff in tier two restorative practices using, um, the small circles for acknowledging hurts and harms. Um, and moving forward with relationships in the classroom. Many of our teachers have had the tier one training, which is a, which for the elementary school is around running circles and those morning meetings. This tier two restorative practice is more about, um, running those circles where you're repairing harms. We will continue to develop a calendar where school-wide celebrations reflect our communities and our families. And we'll continue with our IM implementation. And we will choose slash pilot a literacy program that is both state-approved and vetted for its equitable representation of all students and families.
Great. Questions? Everybody should ask. Thank you Erin. Alright, so that gives you some context. Obviously there's, there's more, uh, more work to do. But, but, um, I, I think we're making some real progress.
Can I ask a question? The Supreme Court of the United States is gonna probably get a case in the next year or two. Involves the constitutionality of DEIB. It's being challenged by many conservative groups who are, um, pushing on the state level to defund these programs and to get rid of them. In many states have already been ruled illegal. Okay? How is our district, if the Supreme Court of the United States decides to take a case dealing with this and they find the DEIB programs are unconstitutional for some reason, and it is possible with the Supreme Court, how Peter, is our district ready to deal with that? And, um, have that, has that come up in any conversations where there is pushback now? As vigorous as the pushback was to include it a couple of years ago, it is now coming from the other side. I'm concerned, how will our district respond to it?
Yeah, so to be quite candid, I'm, I'm not spending a lot of time anticipating what the Supreme Court may do in, in, in two years. I, I think that the, the better answer is for us as a group and a school committee, but also a community, to, to look at what, what our hopes and aspirations were when we started doing more DEIB work and to really articulate it. So it's become a, um, um, lightning rod. But fundamentally, there's really important stuff here, right? And, and the other day I was in a meeting with parents and somehow we got off talking about Norman Rockwell and the golden rule. And then somebody quickly responded, don't you know about the platinum rule? And, and the platinum rule is even better than the golden rule. And, and do you know about the platinum rule? So like the golden rules, like treat people how, how, um, you want to be treated. And the platinum rule is treat people how they want to be treated, right? Which is great. It's much, platinum's fancier to go with, much better thing. Uh, I think what we're gonna have to articulate is there, there's some fundamental shared values and beliefs that we all care about as a community. And we need to keep figuring out ways to, to teach them. And, and there's, like, nationally we don't have a very long attention span. And it's very easy to jump from the flavor of the month, like the Baskin Robbins or something. And, and we need to really articulate what our core values and beliefs are. And then, and then, uh, make sure that our, our, uh, curriculum and our assessments and our resources are aligned with those core values and beliefs. So that's my.
Okay.
But, but we could, we could talk, it's coming, right? We'll talk about it in one way.
Okay.
As it comes. So let me shift to the mundane. Last meeting, we did a first reading of KEC, uh, Public Complaints Against Curriculum or Instructional Materials. And then also exhibit, the exhibit and exhibit one. So the, the forms around those. A- as you may recall, these, the, uh, two librarians had big input on this and modeled it on the, um, ALA guidelines. The, the new language is in red, the other language is cross-staffed, but the forms I think are, are spot on. And, and I'd love for anybody to bring up anything, uh, I may have missed and incorporated stuff from the last time. But, but there's the possibility that we may have got it right. And, and if we did, then, then I'd love for you to, uh, uh, vote to approve it. Some comments?
I have one comment on the form.
Yep.
With the request for reconsideration. I didn't know if we needed to add, like there's a checkbox to say location of material or library, but do we need to add their teacher name or classroom name just so we know where it's coming from? Give me one question. Cause otherwise it's not a real way to locate the origin of the material.
Is it E one for me?
First, just the E. I mean, I guess it could go for EM one.
So. Should we just add it? Another one that just says location if known?
Yeah, something like that. Just assume like you put yourself in the position of you're the person reading this. You're the librarian or the principal.
Okay. Does that work for people if I just under, under it, I put location if known?
Where, where are we talking about here? Date of request, name of school, title of item?
Right. Type author, call number, and then I'd stick location if known. Yeah, basically these parts, right?
Okay, yeah. Okay.
What else?
Well, now I don't even know if I'm looking at the right one, but on, do we have a separate one for library materials and classroom materials? Right? So then on the curricular materials, do we want that completed form going to the library, the specialist or to the principal? Cause at one point while we were working on this, in the subcommittee, we combined the form into one. And then I think it looks like it got split out. And I just wanted to.
I, I actually can't remember what we did. I thought we did combine it.
That's what I thought too.
So I think there's the possibility that, that the one you have in front of you isn't.
Yeah.
Is wrong, isn't the combined form.
I agree.
We did, at the policy meeting, we did combine these.
Cause the one that I'm reading from, which I think was the one from our meeting, it just says in that upper paragraph, please return the completed form to your teacher, school, library, the specialist or principal.
Right. So the, the one I, I meant to share and I'm sorry I missed that order. It might have just, when it was printed. We had a, at the end of the day, we had a combined form. Yeah. It had the same material in it.
Yeah, it's all, right. It, it, the rest of it is all.
Correct.
Fine and correct. The one thing I thought that was still missing was just a piece about knowing the teacher name or where it came from.
Right.
Otherwise, I think in order to continue and bring it to the committee and all that, you're gonna need that information.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. So, so I'll, um, we, I guess, would somebody like to make a motion to, uh, let me just hear if there's any other candidates. I'm not hearing any, so I have a motion to accept these KEC, KEC, E, KCE one as amended.
There just won't be a KEC one?
There won't be a KEC. That's right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So.
Second.
Discussion. Hold on a favor. opposed or abstention? Your name was. Okay. So thank you for that. Peter, do you want to go back to hiring update or MSBA kind of script over this? No, well, while we're in policy, can I just talk about two others and then, yes, and then go back? So there are two that, that remain outstanding. One's a policy and one's an MOU. So the, the other policy is KLG. And that's the, um, like district police relations one. And I'm getting feedback from our attorney on that one, so I'll bring that back. And then I wanna, um, uh, come up with a better draft MOU and run that through the policy subcommittee first to get both their feedback and potential blessing on it before I bring that to the, the whole group. And MOU is a weird thing, cause it's not really a policy, but there'll be a place for it to go, at least to the policy. And we talked about it the last policy meeting in, in somewhat abstract, so it makes sense to go there first. Yeah. We will have a policy meeting in May. We just haven't figured out a date. Right. Okay. So, so the, the, that's those two. But hopefully at the next meeting, I'll, I'll, um, I'll be able to come back with a, a KLG one. So the hiring update, so on, on the second page of the agenda, no, I'm sorry, on the personnel report, at, at the bottom, it lists the current vacancies. So, um, the search is ongoing for the, um, um, Moneybrook, uh, principal position. And we hope to do interviews next, um, uh, the Tuesday when we're back, the twenty-third. Uh, I'm reaching out to candidates tomorrow. And we had one meeting of the search committee online, uh, to check in mostly on process and, and questions. Okay, so that's, that's, uh, going on. We're still looking for an administrative assistant to the principal. And I think there's some candidates in that pool, uh, directed study supervisor. And the librarian position is currently filled by a long-term sub. But we're looking for a, a new librarian for next year. We continue to have a custodian vacancy at the middle school. And with Christie's announcement, we're, um, we're starting a, a search process for a high school principal. I reached out, I think I said this at the beginning of the meeting, and something like thirty people have already volunteered to be on that search committee. Students, faculty, staff and, and parents. And, and I'll let it sit a little more and, and then I'll, I'll go through that. Christie's moving ahead with candidates for, um, the CBT Assistant Principal Position. And, and they're scheduling, uh, interviews. And then for next year, we have a, a health and a PD position at the, at the high school. And then at the, at the district level, some summer stuff connected to CLEO, special education, grants, agents, landscaping, um, and, and custodial things. MSBA, uh, not a lot of, uh, conversations with them, but, but tons of stuff going on with the, with the building project that we can. Yeah, everything going on with the building project thus far. It's early. It, it's been really positive, really exciting. We had a meeting of, what was the one you had there that I? Did that outreach, Peter, the other day? And, and we looked at an early version of a, of a, a project website that's almost ready to go live, we just have to make a couple little edits. And the people who came to that were real quality people who really want to help. Some elementary school parents, which is what we were sorely lacking eleven years ago. So it's all good. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but it's all worked out so far very well. And people like with design backgrounds. Yeah, and we will, we will have Donna Nisco and her team do one of our meetings at some point. So you can meet them and, and start to learn with everyone. And, and there'll be, uh, uh, a, a, the third educational visioning sessions coming up, and that's already a group. But then there'll be, uh, and they did a nice thing with the high school staff the other day. I'm on the half day, spent two and a half hours with them getting feedback. And then, um, there'll be an informational meeting for the community coming up, uh, uh, at, at the high school. That'll also include some tours, so people who have not been in the building in a long time, uh, have, have context. Yeah, and Jason's group with the building committee is doing really well. And I think that's, um, one of the changes from many years ago, Skanska has someone who does public relations, that's how, um, does posters, does, organizes meetings, it's things that fell through the cracks last time or just were really hard for us to do because we don't have enough staff. So it's, it's really so far been a positive. We have a long ways to go, but it's so far been a positive.
What is the next like operative date though in terms of the MSBA process? I know you said it's far off. Like we have to submit something or do something?
Yeah, so, um, we, we have to submit an, an educational plan. Let, let me come to the next. I mean, I have a whole list of all, all the steps that, the, the, the few things we will need to talk about is, is sort of the, the educational plan. As a committee, we should look at the pros and cons relatively soon of what kind of vote we might want to do in October of twenty-five and, and just decide and discuss that and, and then, and then announce that. I think that's about. One of the things I talked to Peter about today was, we want to just announce this is how the vote's gonna go. As a school committee, we'll make an informed decision, get that off of our plate. There won't be any controversy about it. This is the way we're doing it. There won't be any discussion, well, if you do it this way, no, we're very decided. We're gonna do it this way and this is the reasons. So it's one less thing to cloud the, the whole project. Well, we really need to look at the project, the high school project. And, and then on the, on the architect designer side, they've been working really closely with Steve. They, they had like things to, to measure traffic flow, uh, uh, I think a week ago, in and out of the high school and on Route seven Monument Valley Road. They're doing some additional, uh, is it cores or borins?
Core sampling.
Core sample, of course, additional core samples, uh, some, some things like that. They're, they're gonna be again in the building a little bit during break, looking at some things. So they're, they're making, they're making quite a, a bit of progress. Yeah, I think the next couple, one of the next couple of meetings, we'll have to work our schedule, see if they can probably not come to it, but zoom into it and introduce themselves. Yeah. And tell us where they are. So I think that's. So let me go in your subcommittee then. Uh, Jason, buildings and grounds?
Haven't on that.
Superintendent's evaluation?
Isn't that that?
Finance is not that. Of course, I wasn't invited. I did that negotiation. That negotiation where, uh, in the middle of the teacher's contract, it's, we started late for obvious reasons and, and we're pushing along. It's a really good group of teachers and administrators and school committee members. And, um, we're, we're, we have a deadline. It's a, it's a false deadline. And we'll let you know if we're gonna make it or not, but it won't be for lack of trying or lack of avhesiveness. We're all working together. It's, it's actually been pretty good. It's just a heavy load starting this in April.
What's the deadline? June thirtieth?
Well, no, the deadline. Well, no, the deadline is the last teacher would like to vote, we'd like them to vote before school ends.
Oh, no, okay.
Right. So really, like, we, we hope to maybe get to the end of it in, in the end of May. And we, they have to come back to us with their bylaws, but they have so many days before they vote and the last day of school. I don't think it's gonna snow again. The last day of school is the, is the fourteenth now. They're tentatively.
I did miss one, huh?
Any other subcommittees? Personnel report, Peter, anything else you want to ask?
No.
Any old or new?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, there is one, I'm sorry. Uh, Barb Minkler, I don't think I had shared before, is a longtime teacher at the elementary school. And, and she's announced her retirement at the end of the year, so looking at her for, for many years of service.
She is either currently the longest-serving teacher in the district?
You have some really tough questions.
I'm sorry. You have to be close.
She, she might be close, I can't definitively say that. I mean, Christie's thirty-four years, so I, I, I'll look it up.
Any old or new business, public comment? Yep, go right ahead. Go, interest issues, I'll look closer so that you, you can be heard.
Hi, everyone. My name is Fred Erickson. I've been a middle school math teacher in the district for twenty-four years. But I've been teaching for thirty-four years. I'm coming today to make you aware of observations I've seen at my school in particular that are, I think, unfortunate fallout from something that's been on your minds for a while since December. I teach with, not all of my colleagues, but a great number of them are, have become quite wary. They have experienced from firsthand observations how quickly a teacher in our district can be exposed. And by that, I mean left standing alone. The teacher experienced a false accusation and for quite a long time had no support available. Because of the nature of the accusation, other, she was doubtful of other teachers, which is understandable. She was doubtful of administration and how they were supporting and of the union. And while that was her experience, all of us have had a, an experience because that couldn't have been me. Someone could make a false accusation about me. And so now many of my colleagues were wary. Were wondering, what's gonna happen when the next false accusation comes about? And so that's just is, that's what we're dealing with. That's not every teacher, but many of them. What I hear from my colleagues are phrases like, I don't feel supported. And that's in the abstract. And they're usually referring to in some way, the school committee or administration, which would be sort of the central office. And it's one of those situations where it, kind of like an us and them, you probably get this from your kids. Well, they get to do this, they get to do that. And you ask, well, who are they? And they have trouble pointing to who they mean. In a similar way, my, my colleagues are expressing these doubts. But they're there and they're very real. And they impact how strong we can be as educators. The reason I'm here is because I think together we can all not necessarily resolve that issue, but start to build back some trust and start to build back to a better community. What I would ask of you specifically, I've been talking to lots of people in the last couple of weeks. Lots of what I consider to be very intelligent people. But I hear frequently from all the people I'm talking to this legal wall. Well, gee, we'd like to do something, but legally we might get in trouble. Well, legally, we're not sure if we can do this. Well, we're not sure what the lawyers will allow us to say. In that absence, it feels to us on the ground as teachers that nothing is being said. That nothing supportive is being said. Nothing substantive is being said. And while I appreciate the work that you folks have done, I definitely appreciate the investigation, which clarified a lot of things, allowed some trust among us at school to start to redevelop. Because for a long time, we wondered who was who. Right? That anonymous complaint was like fire in the middle of California. Like, it just burned through us. We're working as a staff to rebuild that trust, but we could use some additional help. It's interesting that I'm here today after the presentations you've heard about the D E I B and the way the kids were coming in, about the conflict resolution. Neither one of us is at fault in this situation, but we're both, right? The school committee, the teacher, you staff, were hurt. Together, we could sit down, we could talk about ways to build ourselves and our trust back together. It's interesting too, and that my poor column up here, talking about proficiency-based learning, you have some really important and, and great questions. Staff could help you with those things, right? Some of the staff have been piloting these things for several years. We're still wrestling with the things that you're just starting to wrestle with. You could talk with us about those things. You could talk with us about other pieces. And not necessarily in an official capacity, but just in a capacity of, hey, I'm here at your school. What are you doing? What's going well for you? What are the obstacles you're having? And just your presence could help reestablish this trust that we are lacking as educators from our community. I don't know if, in some of the a couple of people had mentioned earlier, some complaints from teachers. But one of the other things that I'm hearing is there seems to be a shift in, in the community and how they're treating us. At one point, although parents' community may have been upset with the teacher at a particular incident, now we're getting challenged on everything we do. On a pretty regular basis, in a pretty un-sportsmanlike way. Right? There are accusations leveled before there are questions asked. We are happy to take the brunt of that, but it's another piece of what we're dealing with. What I can specifically, what I am specifically asking you to do is please find a way to connect with us as teachers. I'm inviting you personally to my classroom. I would love to talk with any of you. I'd love to have you sit in on my class or sit in after my class and ask me about what things are going on. I'd love to introduce you to my colleagues. And have you hear what we're saying and what we're dealing with. Not that you can fix the complaints that we might have, but as you set your policies, as you decide on the next steps, as you debate proficiency-based learning, if you are hearing from us who are already working on this and have hopefully some input that's valuable to you, we can make for a better system. So I'm not here to accuse anyone. I'm not here to blame anyone. I'm here asking for your support in a very real way for the staff that isn't feeling nearly as powerful and confident working with your children and the community's children as we worked previously. So I hope that you're hearing through me our hopefully temporary hurt. And I hope that you're hearing from me that as a group of what sounds to me to be very intelligent people, there has to be a way, there has to be a way for us to make motions forward that aren't impeded by whatever legal process needs to continue. And I understand that it's there and that we have to deal with it. But I also believe there are things that can be done. I've been sharing with people my ideas and a lot of times they're getting shot down because of legal pieces. But again, that doesn't stop me from wanting to brainstorm. It doesn't stop me from wanting to brainstorm with you. What is our next step that will make people feel better so that we can all do a great job for our children?
Thanks, Fred. I think we really should have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, I was concerned, Eric, Eric, thank you.